It is 7:30. We will call our January 18, 2022 regular city council meeting to order. Let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off all cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. Approve the agenda as posted in accordance with the open meeting law. Inherent place all agenda items on the table for discussion. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Lundberg. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the minutes. The regular reorganizational meeting of January 3, 2022. Approve. What is the wish of the council?
I move to approve the minutes from the January 3 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starley, second by Councilmember Canofla. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the bills. Approve checks 106090 through 106133 totaling $206,934.83 for the year ending 12/31/21. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Starley. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Checks 106134 through 106191 totaling $1,839,994.12. Approve. What is the... Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
No problem. Motion by Councilmember Liljegren, second by Councilmember Canofla. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Awards, donations, presentations, and proclamations. Donations. Resolution 2022-08. Fourth quarter donations 2021. Adopt. Lori.
Yes, we have before you tonight a resolution adopting the donations for the fourth quarter, which include a donation of $7,744.50 for the playground from the Kiwanis Club. That is the final installment of the three-year agreement that we had with them. Fire Relief Association donated $5,700 for rescue equipment for the fire department. And the Lone Eagle Auto Club had a $100 donation for the fire department.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-08. Fourth quarter donations.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Starley. Any discussion? Resolution. Call a roll, please.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goschek?
Yes.
Carries.
I got a question, Mr. President. Did we get the year-end transfers somewhere on the agenda?
No, we were just going to bring them up at this meeting.
Oh, okay.
They'll be at the next meeting. I just wanted to discuss those couple of items.
Consent agenda. Airport commission minutes, December 2021, received. Animal control report, December 2021, received. Fire report, December 2021, received. Park recreation and tree board minutes, November 2021, received. Pay equity implementation report, 2021, received. Police report, December 2021, received. Public works report, December 2021, received. Recycling report, September through December, and recap, 2021, received. Temporary roadway closing for parking spaces, Little Falls Convention and Visitors Bureau, February 12, 2022, approve. Water report, December 2021, received. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Hanson. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Public hearings and lettings. Lettings. Geotechnical services, independent testing technologies, public improvements, 392 and 398 award. Greg.
Thank you, Mr. President. In your packet here, we have a memo from Bolton and Mink. If you recall, we have hired Bolton and Mink to do the engineering for the 18th Street Southeast product, as well as the river crossing along by Thomas Drive. Part of that design requires to get soil borings to find out what type of soils they have underneath there so they can design the pipe, as well as the road, properly. So with that process, proposals were sent out to both Braun and ITT in terms of soil borings and what it would cost. On both of those products, ITT came in as the low quote. On 18th Street Southeast, their quote was $4,100. On the South Water Main project, ITT came in at $5,810. So this evening, we are asking the council to approve those two quotes from ITT to conduct the soil investigations for those two projects.
What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Canofla, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolution 2022-03. Award bids, public improvement, 391. Sidewalks. Adopt. Greg.
Thank you, Mr. President. In front of you, we have Resolution 2022-03. If you recall, in 2021, we had our sidewalk improvement projects to take care of the ADA deficiencies, whether it's the lip for tripping hazards, or if they were cracked up and they were too wide. We did have Beyond the Curb LLC do the replacement portion of it already. If you recall, they did that in the summer of 2021. But we weren't able to find anyone to do the grinding until now. And so because this is the Chapter 429 where we have to do the resolution and such for it, we do have both of them on there. So Beyond the Curb would be the one contractor that would be hiring this evening in the amount of $16,700. And then Northland PCC Incorporated would be doing the grinding from New London in the amount of $3,978. We're asking for approval on both opposed.
What is the wish of the council?
I move to approve Resolution 2022-03.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion? Resolution. Call a roll, please.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goschek?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Carries.
Squad vehicle and related equipment, various companies. Chief.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Tonight, I'm here before you to request authorization to purchase and set up a 2022 Ford, police interceptor four-door police utility vehicle. The vehicle would be purchased from 1040 Ford in St. Cloud. The cost of the vehicle is $34,145.38. The price of the vehicle is included, or the vendor, 1040 Ford, is included in the state contract pricing. And the total setup cost of the vehicle is $65,737.42.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Starley. Discussion.
Yeah, Mr. President. I noticed on some of the equipment that's being installed on it, it has for 2020 vehicles. Now, being in that type of business for quite a few years, a lot of times, they will cover up, they will also fit into indoor vehicles. So you're aware that everything that's going to be put into there is going to match and pli...
Yes. Yep.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Workstation from Staples. Chief.
Item number two. I would be requesting authorization to install a double workstation for the Sergeant Investigator's Office. Currently, there's one workstation in that office. I would like to install a second workstation that would allow for two employees to work in that same space. We're trying to maximize the space within the building as much as we can. The funds for the purchase are included in the 2022 police budget. And the purchase would be from Staples, and that pricing is also part of the Sourcewell contract pricing. The price is $6,980.75.
What is the wish of the council?
Can I move to a word?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Starley. Any discussion?
Yeah, one quick question. This stuff is, you can take this down and move it, because I know we're going to be looking at a new police station here, right?
Yeah.
This stuff can be disassembled and moved into another area without too much trouble?
I would think it could be, yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. rake, mower, and gator, Frontier Ag and Turf for golf. John.
Thank you, Council President. If you recall, last year, we changed our, we made our first golf equipment leases. We're trying to move into a lease and replacement schedule that can kind of make sure that we have equipment that's operating, since we don't have someone on staff as mechanically as inclined as Dale was to keep things, keep things running. So the next piece of equipment that we really are in need of, based on the assessment from Ethan, is a new fairway mower. The one that it would be replacing has a significant number of hours on it relative to what fairway mowers go through in the industry. A bunker rake that has an incalculable number of hours on it. It's been in the fleet since probably the 1980s and is no longer operating. And lastly, is a utility vehicle. John Deere's model is a gator. This would replace this old Cushman that we have that has no independent starting ability. The only way they were able to get it going last year to be utilized was to pole start it and kind of just used it as a, you know, the back end as kind of the hopper vehicle, and they would tow it around the golf course. So it's really, its time has come. And again, that one is unknown, I think, in terms of total hours possibly on that unit. The, we did do comparison pricing between John Deere and MTI, which is Toro, which we have been utilizing. There has been discussion about trying to uniform, make the fleet more uniform in terms of our overall product. So we were strongly considering Toro, but the prices were hard to beat from John Deere. And after a lot of conversation with them, and a little bit on the concerns of just, if there's any maintenance that, you know, on these, on these pieces of equipment, where would that be done? They do have a maintenance facility in Hastings, but with the two pieces, the bunker rake, I think, in particular, and certainly the gator vehicle, the gator vehicle could be serviced here locally quite easily, with the fairway mower, you know, likely having to, not likely being able to be serviced here. But they do have a facility in Hastings. The MTI facility, I think, was Brooklyn Center. So when they, those repairs did need to be made, that it's not that much farther. But, you know, the intent there with the lease is that we're not getting to the point where we're having to send the equipment off to be fixed that often. We hopefully that it's, we're trading it in before those, those needs arise. The consideration that we have on the lease options were kind of two different looks. One is a five-year lease that gives you a $1 buyout of the equipment when it's done. And that's the direction we're recommending tonight, because with the bunker rake and the utility vehicle, they will easily have a lifespan that's, that's beyond the five years, based on, you know, our experience with the replacement equipment that we have. The fairway mower, we probably would just turn over and re-lease at the end of the five years. So, but it's something that we could certainly consider. The difference in the lease is, you know, is, is an amount, but with what we planned for and budgeted for, for this year, it was based on these amounts that we were quoted. We did get quotes in at the end of the year that were applicable for this. And I do believe Ethan has done a significant amount of vetting of this opportunity, and he is strongly suggesting as well the, the lease option for the John Deere.
What is the wish of the council?
Can I move to a word?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President. John, will the fairway mower, will that have and be able to maybe get a vacuum attachment for, in the fall with leaves on the fairways and stuff like that, or?
No, not on the, I don't believe so on the fairway mower, but we do have the rough mowers that have the mulching kits that are able to take care of the leaves. And with the new blower that we also purchased, that was part of a donation, that will significantly help be able to get the leaves into the, we typically move the leaves from the fairways and the greens into the roughs and into the areas between the, between two holes, and then we take the mulching kit, the mowers with the mulching kits and go and, and take care of the leaves that way. So that will, being able to get those, that extra blower going, that will kind of double our, our time that we can, amount of the leaves that we can move.
Yeah, that's, that's my problem. I play in them areas where all the leaves are.
If they're mulched up, it isn't too bad, but yeah.
No, that sounds like a conflict of interest.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Old business. Change Order 3, Rice Lake Construction Group, wastewater improvement project. Approve. Greg.
Thank you, Mr. President. So in front of you, we have change order number three for our wastewater improvement project. We have an, if you look through the packet, there's a number of different work directives. I think number 14 through 20 is included in that. At our last meeting, we did discuss our work order, or work change directive number 20, which is the biggest amount included in this, in this change order. All of those are items that were necessary to make the plant basically operate as it was intended to. The total on change order number three is $93,826.87. With the inclusion of this, I think we're at about 6% over the, the overall bid price for the project. So it's still within reason in terms of project go. I think there's one more, really small one, to finalize out the project, but otherwise, this is the, the last portion of the change orders for the wastewater project. So we are asking for approval this evening in the amount of $93,826.87.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll motion to approve change order number three.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starley, second by Councilmember Liljegren. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President. Greg, on page 109, you have the change in contract price and contract times. You got the $18,870,942. Then you got, I think that's change order one and two, right?
That's correct, yes.
922099?
That is incorrect. That's, yes, that's, that's change order number one and number two equate to $922,099. No sense.
And those two numbers, that, those two numbers should add up to that 19917154. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then when you put in change order number three, it all comes to $20 million, 10,0987, or 80, 87 cents, correct?
That's the intent, yes.
Yeah, well, if you add that up, that's wrong. You're about $100,000 off.
Okay. I will have them double check that. I didn't put the numbers in there, but I will have them double check to make sure that they're accurate.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Resolution 2022-04. Accept feasibility report and call for public hearing. Public improvement, 397. Gale Drive. Adopt. Greg.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a quick presentation in regards to Gale Drive, as well as the next item, which is Circle Drive. So bear with me one minute, and I will pull the presentation up. And I'll go through this really quick. This is very similar, if not the exact same, presentation that we'll have for the public hearing on the 20 seconds for, for these, for these projects. But as you know, we're looking at three projects. The first two that we're going to talk about right now is Gale Drive and Circle Drive. And then later on in the agenda, we'll be looking at 4th Street Southeast. So the project location, Gale Drive is up in the Bell Prairie area. We're looking at going basically from Riverwood all the way around that loop to Riverwood to bring sewer and water. That's one of the, there's like three locations that we don't have sewer and water within that Riverwood area, and this is one of the last ones to, to get it. We did get a petition to extend sewer and water in through that stretch. And so this, this feasibility report is in response to that. The pavement rating is a three. It's in poor condition. That's one of the reasons that we haven't done anything over there, is because it does not have sewer and water. It doesn't make sense to repair the road when we know that sewer and water is eventually at some point going to come underneath that. There is no water, no sewer, or no storm sewer underneath that road as it sits. Looking at the proposed improvements, we'd be putting in eight-inch sanitary sewer main, six-inch water main, sewer and water service is stubbed out to the property line, 22-foot rural section with a swale, very much similar to what we did on Oak Street, as well as Crestview, and then five inches of aggregate base with three and a half inches of bituminous pavement. Looking at costs, total project cost coming in at $611,634. Looking at the assessments on it, we'd be bringing in about $301,894, which is a 66.4%. That two-thirds, one-third split is kind of what we're, what we're shooting for. So the city will be picking up the remainder at $309,740.
Something doesn't work with those percentages.
Yeah.
We're close to 50/50. You're right. We'll have to update that. Should be closer to 50/50. It's still good. Sewer and water assessment rates, these are very similar to what we had on Crestview, as well as Oak Street, that $18 per foot for residential. Sewer and water both at $30 per foot. Sewer service at $1,100 per each, and the water service at $1,900. We would most likely combine this with, with another project, as you'll see forward. So looking at the next steps from here, our public hearing will be on February 22nd. Would be design in March, advertisement forbid, early April, open up bids in March. It's not right either. Open bids on March 31st, and then do construction in the, in the summer of 2022.
That doesn't work.
No, the, the April doesn't work in there either. But March is when we would be doing the advertising on that.
It's a good thing we're early in this process.
Summer construction with our assessments, hearings in the fall. So any questions on that one, other than the incorrect dates and percentages?
Well, this started be, one, one address.
That's correct.
On a petition.
That's correct.
Right?
Yep.
I mean, with technology out there, is there any way to get services to somebody? I, I mean, I, I'm pretty sure I know the, the property involved here. It was a vacant lot. Somebody bought it, and they probably want to build a house, and there's no utilities there.
Correct.
And we seem to be get, be put in this position quite frequently where we have one house that's resulting in completely ripping up a street. It's a rural section of road with, I read, 66 feet of right-of-way.
Correct.
I mean, is there a more efficient way of getting services in there? Why can't we dig a trench next to the pavement rather than digging it all up? I know.
In this particular case, the challenge is how deep it is. Because a lot of these, well, most of the homes are on the riverside, and so they've got a hill going down to the river. Most of them have a full basement on it. And we actually did go out to check to see the depths of a lot of the basements to make sure that we would be able to serve them with the sewer and water. We'll have to dig back into Riverwood to actually lower that, that stub. For whatever reason, when they did Riverwood, it wasn't down far enough, so we'll have to dig into that to get it down. But the challenge is the, the depth to those in order to get them. They have deep lots, and so in order to get the sewer service deep enough in the street to be able to serve them, so they don't have to have a lift pump at their house, we, we have to dig a pretty deep hole in order to, to get those, that sewer and water in on Gale. So unfortunately, we would have to dig up the entire stretch, much like we did on Oak Street, in order to get the sewer and the water in there.
Okay. My concern is the turnaround time, because, I mean, in keeping with what we've done in the past, we're not going to compel anybody else to hook up to the utilities, and we're going to forego collecting on the assessment till they hook up, which could be decades. The street, the street is likely going to need to be redone before half of those houses are connected. And I mentioned this before, and I don't think we need to do it now, but when we're doing these, I'd like to see us consider a time bound. I mean, if you haven't had a need to connect, be it 10 years, 15 years, if, if our residents are ever going to get their money back, I mean, us as the city, as the residents and the people that are paying taxes, we're going to have to start connecting some of these people to get a return on investment. That's just my opinion.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll move to adopt the feasibility report for Resolution 2022-04.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Starley, second by Councilmember Liljegren. Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goschek?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2022-05. Accept feasibility report and call for public hearing. Public improvement, 397. Circle Drive. Adopt. Greg.
Thank you. This one, we're talking about Circle Drive. Again, I'll try to run through this one real quick, see if you can catch any of my errors on this one. Circle Drive, I'm sure you guys are familiar with where that's at. The soccer fields are just to the, to the southwest of the location. It's right off of Pine Avenue. There's a circle that's essentially not served with sewer and water at currently. We do have sewer and water on Park, as well as Pine, and a little short section of Circle Drive, we're looking at extending that around the stretch. We did receive a petition of over 35% of the residents to extend sewer and water through that stretch to complete that. It does have a PESA rating of six for the, for the blacktop, which is in good shape. But again, it does not have any sewer, water, or storm sewer underneath that stretch. Now, we wouldn't necessarily be doing storm sewer pipes as much as stormwater improvements, which would be swales, much like we've saw, we've seen on Oak Street, as well as Crestview from 2021, the same thing. The proposed improvements, again, eight-inch sanitary sewer, six-inch water main, 22-foot rural section with the swale, five inches of aggregate base, three and a half inches of blacktop, and then sewer and water services will be stubbed out to the property line. Looking at the costs, this one does come in at $874,692. One of the reasons that this one is a little bit more expensive is because the sewer that was installed on, on Circle Drive is not deep enough to serve all the way around. When it was originally designed back in, I think, 2003, the shallowest that it got in the street was about eight feet. By doing that, a lot of those houses would need lift pumps. I don't think that's necessarily the route that we want to go, because we will get a lot of pushback from requiring everybody to have lift pumps. So what we did is we looked at what can we do to increase the depth in order to get proper depth to all of those folks along Circle Drive? And let me back up here, and it'll kind of show you. What we would end up doing, I'm not sure if you can follow the cursor, would be coming off of Pine Avenue where the old overpass used to go, following that around, and then coming through mid-block to serve Circle Drive, both to the north as well as to the south. We have had conversations with the, with one of the property owners, and they are receptive to an easement through there to be able to bring the sewer through. But we'll be bringing sewer down that stretch, which obviously we won't be able to necessarily assess anyone for that, but that will give us the depth that we need in order to serve everyone properly. There is one house in the northwest corner of that, that stretch. I don't see my mouse in there anywhere. And it drops about four feet down from the road. There's really no way that we can get that one by gravity. That one will need to have a lift pump of some sort. I presume they have one for their system right now. Don't know that for sure. But gravity-wise and grade-wise, there's just no way to make up that four-foot difference in order to get it. So I suspect that one is going to need a lift pump over there. But everybody else will be through gravity if they, if they so choose. Looking at the assessments. Looking at the assessments, um, 39.1%, we look at, uh, being assessed, so that's $342,384. The city would pick up the remainder at 60%, just over 60%, $532,000, $532,308 for a total project cost of $874,692. The assessment rates would be very similar, if not, will they be exactly the same, uh, as Gale Drive, uh, that $18 per foot for the, for the street, $9 for the side footage up to the 150-foot. Sewer and water main would be at $32 per foot, uh, sanitary service line $1,100, and the water main service would be at $1,900. We'd be looking at opening bids end of March, having our public hearing February 22nd, construction in 2022 with the final assessment hearing, uh, in September of October of 2022. These would all be bid together, um, Gale and, and Circle, uh, as one project, so they'd be combined at that, at that point in time if they move forward. Any questions on it?
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-05, accept feasibility report and call for public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Knopfler. Any discussion?
I will abstain on that vote because I've got a lot on Circle Drive.
Call or roll, please.
Um, Hercock?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Abstain.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Carries?
New business, uh, for personnel. Interview committee recommendation, Joshua Burgart, police officer investigator, accept and approve. Henny.
Thank you. Um, good evening. So back in December, uh, the council authorized the posting of the police officer investigator position. We had three internal candidates apply, um, and then our interview committee was made up of the mayor, myself, Sergeant Hagen and Nagorski. We interviewed all three candidates. Um, they had to do a, uh, presentation on their investigative skills on a previous case that they had worked on. Um, it came down to, uh, very close, close race between all three very qualified candidates. Um, in the end, the interview committee is recommending Josh Burgart be appointed to the patrol officer position and as well to post his position as the patrol officer, um, so we can fill that.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll move to accept and approve the interview committee recommendation.
Second.
And I assume you're, by saying the, the recommendation, that you approve posting the opening?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Motion by Councilmember Starly, second by Councilmember Liljegren. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Position description updates, points and pay upgrades, clubhouse, supervisor and head groundskeeper, approve.
Thank you. So, um, when our golf course manager left employment last early spring, uh, we divided those duties up between the head groundskeeper and the clubhouse supervisor and had a stipulation of, I believe it was a $4 pay raise in order to cover those duties. So now we want to make this the permanent position that we move forward for, with, um, without the golf course manager, so keeping these two duties as, or these two, excuse me, these two positions as is and permanent going forward. Um, we place the, both positions at 225 points, which puts it in a grade eight. Um, so then the temporary additional duty pay will end December 31st, and then the new points will be effective January 1st of '22.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll move to approve, uh, the position description updates for, uh, groundskeeper.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Nope, I didn't miss before. Motion by Councilmember Starly, second by Councilmember Goschek. No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Position description updates, points and pay grades for the groundskeeper, approve.
Okay, thank you. So for the groundskeeper position, um, in reviewing the position, the general duties have remained the same. However, they are working with a lot more expensive equipment now with all of our upgrades, um, which takes a more tactical approach of mechanical ability, um, and a higher level of accuracy. So we have increased that position's points up to 125, placing it in a category three versus the previous pay grade as of category two. So going forward with the, um, with, uh, January 1st of 2022, we would like the groundskeeper position for the golf course in a grade three.
What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I believe my last motion was for groundskeeper. Um, should I amend man, amend that back to the clubhouse supervisor and heads groundskeeper? I believe my...
Exactly.
Yes.
I, I would amend that, uh, that motion.
It's two different positions. So in the original one, it was the clubhouse supervisor and the head groundskeeper. Now we're looking at the other groundskeeper.
Right, and he was just thinking he didn't word it right on the first one.
Right. He just mentioned groundskeeper, so we just need it clarified on...
Yes.
For the last one.
Yep, thank you.
And then a motion for this one, if we could.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Knopfler, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolution 2022-09, establish salaries paid on-call firefighters, adopt.
Okay. Um, last but certainly not least for me, um, the budgeting process for '22 involved a 3% increase for our paid-on-call firefighters. That is what this resolution is stating. Uh, in addition, the city has also contributed $9,000 annually to the Fire Relief Association, which goes for, goes towards firefighter retirement. That has not changed in this resolution. The only thing changing is a 3% increase.
What is the wish of the council?
I move to adopt Resolution 22-09, establishing salaries for paid on-call firefighters.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Liljegren. Any discussion? Call or roll, please.
Starly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Carries?
Resolution 2022-06, order feasibility report, public improvement 390, Fourth Street Southeast, adopt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we've been talking about, uh, these projects for quite some time. This one is Fourth Street Southeast. Uh, this will be a staff-initiated project, if you recall. Um, this project is in conjunction with, uh, the county as well. Um, project location, we're looking at all the way from the US Highway 10 overpass on the south, going on Fourth Street, uh, up to about, just shy of First Avenue Northeast, uh, is the stretch that we'd be looking at, uh, for this, for this project. Uh, this portion of it has a PESA rating of four, uh, which indicates structural improvement is required. Uh, the water main was installed in the 1970s. It does have a six-inch cast iron through that stretch. We do have multiple frozen water services throughout the years, uh, multiple broken curb stops. Uh, the sanitary sewer is both eight and 10-inch, uh, vitrified clay pipe installed in 1913 and 1968. Uh, we do have significant inflow as well as shallow sewer main, uh, which has the potential and has, uh, at times frozen up. Um, I know between, uh, right around Seventh Avenue, that gets extremely shallow, and you'll see in some of the pictures coming up here, uh, we have to constantly flush that, uh, that sewer in order to maintain, uh, flow in there over the winter months, uh, so that the residents along there are able to, uh, to use the sewer. Otherwise, it has frozen up in the past. Uh, the storm sewer was installed in 1968 along this stretch. Picture of the street, um, I'm sure most of you are familiar with Fourth Street. It's one of our, our main stretches of road in, in Little Falls here. Looking at the televising reports, um, you can see here up on the top left, this is, uh, root intrusion. Uh, this is a service where it's basically plugged with roots. Um, that obviously causes problems with, uh, with the flow coming into the pipe as well as, uh, within the, in the pipe itself. We do have a flat grade normally, and you'll see this on a couple of, uh, upcoming, um, pictures. The flow is not nearly as, uh, as high, and there, you can see it's about a third to a quarter of the way up the pipe. Normally, they're quite a bit farther down, especially in low flows like this. Um, so this shows we're seeing a sag in the pipe. Uh, that's where sediment and everything else tends to collect, which then leads to, to blockages. Again, root intrusion, you can see on the right side of that picture where the roots are just kind of hanging out into the pipe, uh, that tends to, to block, uh, anything from going through it. This is a root intrusion as well as, uh, what we'd call a, a hammer tap. So when, um, a plumber needs to get into the pipe, uh, in a location where there's not a Y, they basically take a hammer. They hit it with the hammer to, to knock a hole in it. Um, sometimes they do the proper connection where it's a rubber boot or saddle like you, we see with our water main. Other times, they don't. Uh, when they don't, we tend to get these, these root intrusions, uh, around it, which we see, uh, on this particular location, um, which then causes problems for the service as well as our main. Again, another root intrusion on that one. Um, we have offset joints, uh, which have the tendency to allow water to inflow into it. Uh, with this area being sand, uh, whenever we get a rain, the water comes in fairly rapidly, and then, uh, with offset joints, they're not sealed properly, and so you get water coming into our, into our sanitary sewer. Um, inflow again, uh, you can see on the, on the right-hand side, it's a little bit harder to see, but that's actually water just flowing in through that, uh, through that service line there. I'm not sure why, um, the water is coming in there. Like I said, it's sand, but you can definitely see clear water coming in at a pretty steady pace. Um, and we were televising this. I don't remember what time it was. It was like 10, 11 o'clock in the morning. So it's not as if it's a normal time for, uh, showers or anything like that, uh, no suds. So I suspect, again, there's an inflow, uh, problem cracked pipe or something that this particular service is experiencing, experiencing water coming in. We have the pipe sags. Uh, you can see in this picture, you notice where the water line is at. Uh, you'll see in the next picture here. That's where, um, the first one is where it should be. This is where it's, where it's at just shortly downstream from that, uh, particular location. So there's the high point in the line, and then it drops back down, um, at this manhole here where, where the water sags, or where the water pools up, and that's where a lot of that other debris gets caught up as well. This image here is where, um, the camera is actually halfway submerged underneath the, the pipe, so it's an even greater sag than what the previous ones were. Again, the, the hammer tap, you can see just the hole in the top of the pipe. Um, this one, they decided not that they need, didn't need to use it, uh, but they still have a, a tap on the top of the, of the pipe, which, um, as well as the pipe sag, you can see the, the white on the bottom. That's actually where the water line is at. So they actually had to tip the camera up in order to get it through this particular stretch, otherwise you couldn't see anything. Um, and that's how we caught the, the, the hammer tap on the pop, on the type, hammer tap on the top of the pipe, um, and then the water of it.
Say that three times quick.
I know, right?
Mm-hmm.
More root intrusion on Fourth Street, um, the hammer tap with the roots. I mean, we've talked about that. Uh, some more roots. This one was a little bit more concerning to me. Um, you'll notice the white on the side of the, the pipe there, uh, that's actually frost, uh, on it. You know, we're all in the middle of July when we, we televise this. This was last week when it was warm out. Um, and we saw frost on the side of that pipe. So the frost is down quite a bit, um, which makes me nervous for frozen water lines this year, uh, because if it's this, if it's this deep already, it's, it's getting close to those, those service lines. This one I'm going to have to apologize for, uh, based on the, the color. Uh, we got our camera back because it was, it was damaged, and so the color in it looks red right now, um, but shortly here, you'll be able to see it. It gets back to normal, uh, to normal color to be able to see it. It's only, uh, about 30 seconds, uh, is all that we've got on here, but, um, I wanted to, to show this because at the very end, um, we actually see ice, ice in the, in the pipe. You can see there on the left, uh, it's about three-quarters of the way up the line on both left and right. Um, so that's telling me that's where the frost line is at. Um, and that's a pretty significant amount of ice in the sanitary sewer. Uh, so that's something that's concerning. We'll be watching that line and be flushing it more often, uh, now that we've seen that because obviously that's, that's a pretty significant amount of, um, ice in that pipe, uh, that we don't like to see, especially at this time of the year.
So would you redo it? Will it be deeper than it currently is?
It will be, um, and I'll get to that in the, in the upcoming slides, but that's some of the benefits that we'll be seeing, um, is we'll be making it deeper so that we don't have these issues, um, for both the residents as well as us for the maintenance. Um, it'll also have the potential to get rid of two lift stations. Right now, Little Falls has 19 lift stations throughout the city. Um, they're a maintenance headache, uh, for us. I'll, I'll be honest, and Matt, our wastewater superintendent, would attest to that. So anytime we can get a, get rid of lift stations, we want to try to do that, and this will allow us to, to do that. Plus, um, if Little Falls ever expands to the southeast, this line will allow us to, to serve that stretch. We've got it big enough to be able to, to handle that, that additional flow. Um, we'll still need a lift station on the east side of, of Highway 10, um, but this will be sized to be able to handle that flow because everything seems to kind of drain down towards that, that Fourth Street overpass. Um, so that's where it would come, come through is through this Fourth Street line. This will be one of our main trunk lines in, in Little Falls.
Is it, where, uh, will it get rid of the lift station that's on Eighth Avenue, or...
Yes, it would. Yep. Yep.
I just, I know that one's there. Where's the other one?
Um, so we're making it deep enough so that we can also go north on Fourth Street Northeast, yeah, Fourth Street Northeast in 2023, which would allow us to get rid of the lift station by that new pond that we dug by Centra Sota. That, we call it Fifth and Fifth. That's, uh, one of our main lift stations. It's probably our third biggest lift station in Little Falls. Um, and it probably only lifts it up about two feet is all it does. And so we'd like to get rid of that. It's quite old. It needs to be rehabbed. Um, so by having Fourth Street deep and allowing us to get up to that one with this, um, we'll be able to get rid of that as well. So looking at our improvements, we kind of touched on, on some of it. We'd be installing an 18-inch sanitary sewer, uh, sewer services to the property line, six-inch water main. South of Fifth Avenue, we'd, we'd increase that to a 10-inch because there's a water main loop, uh, of larger diameter that, that comes in at Fifth Avenue. Uh, so we'd extend from Fifth Avenue south to basically the US 10 overpass, uh, that 10-inch water main. Again, so if we ever expand to the southeast, um, then that would be able to, to serve that for that water main connection as well. Uh, storm sewer improvements, uh, 40-foot foot, 44-foot urban pavement section with curb and gutter, and then this would be a 10-ton, uh, pavement section, which is a little bit bigger than our normal pavement section, uh, but because it is a, a county road, uh, we'd be looking at, uh, the thicker pavement section to be able to have, uh, unrestricted as, but, as much as we can for, uh, load ratings in, in the springtime. And like we mentioned, the two lift stations, uh, we'll be able, be able to eliminate those in the future. Now, the one on Eighth Avenue Southeast is probably not going to be for quite a while before we eliminate that one just because that was, I think, reconstructed in the early 90s, if I remember right. Um, and so that lift station is relatively new plus, uh, as well as the, uh, the sewer in that stretch. So it's probably going to be a little while before we, we do that one. Once we start having issues with that lift station, we'll look at it, but that's all PVC pipe. Um, it's in good shape. The, the sewer is itself. Looking at costs, um, this is by and large one of our most expensive ones. Uh, total proj, project cost is at $5.1 million. Uh, assessments come in at about 25%. We're looking at $1.3 million for assessments. City picking up about 32.8%, $1.6 million. The county, they'd be looking at a lot of the surfacing improvements. Uh, they're at $2.1 million for a total project cost of $5,111,919. We have our, uh, assessment rates listed here, um, very similar to what we've done in the past on adjacent products. Their street southeast being, being one. Um, I'm a little nervous. These might not be enough, but, um, I also recognize that we can only assess, you know, so much. There's kind of a cap in terms of how much we can assess. Um, we did hear from some pipe suppliers that, uh, pipe might be going up. We've seen inflation everywhere. Um, so we're bracing for that a little bit, um, but I don't think we can do much in terms of the assessment rates on, on these once we start looking at, uh, the dollar amount for them, so. We do intend to sell bonds, and we'll get into this on the, on the next one, but, uh, this project likely will not be combined with that other one. Um, for bonding purposes, yes, but for construction, uh, probably not because this is going to be combined with the county project. Um, we would likely bid this one separate. It's a $5 million job, so it'll do fine out on its own. Um, but this one would have wage rates, um, and so we'd be looking at doing this one as a separate standalone and then having, uh, the other one... standalone, and then having the other one bid out separately, maybe a smaller contractor, maybe the same one, don't know, depending on, on who gets it, but we'd be looking at separating those two out. A lot less paperwork on the non-wage rate one, so it, it makes it easier for the Gale Drive and the Circle Drive portion of it, if we don't have those two tight. Again, looking at the same project schedule, and I will get those updated before the public hearing, but we'd be looking in, in early spring letting, just because with this big of a job, we need to give them as much time as possible. We'll be impacting trunk Highway twenty-seven with the crossing of Fourth Street. Fifth Avenue is obviously going to be a big one to, to, to look at. St. Otto's, Eighth Avenue, all of those are going to be a number of different phases in order to get people in and out as best as, as we possibly can, so. Questions on the, the overall project?
You didn't mention it here, but is, is the plan to extend that big, huge raw water line?
Yes.
Under there?
Yes, yep, yep.
So with this, we're probably getting?
Very close.
Pretty close to complete to at least the park, right?
Yes, that's correct. So this would, would, this would extend the raw water main from basically the park all the way up to just shy of First Avenue Northeast. We would have, I think, two blocks between First and Second, and Second, First Street, First Avenue to Second Street on Fourth, we would have a block there, and then on the avenue, we'd have to bring it over to Third Street, because we've already run it quite a ways on Third Street. And then we'd have to get it under the tracks on Third Street over to basically our well field here. So we're within probably four blocks at that point to getting that completed, which would work nicely. If you recall, we've got S C H onboard to do some testing on the southeast part of town over there for that well, and so it, it kind of goes right in that same timeline to be able to, to do that. And then likely in two thousand and twenty-three, we would complete that, that connection at least on the south end, and then up here, we'd have to do the connection to our well field. So two thousand and twenty-three, we could potentially have a well online if everything works out right on that southeast part of town.
I have just a quick question. In these feasibility reports, I, are there going to be any changes? I don't want to get us into a predicament like we were with, or is there going to be any changes to sidewalks or any of that other stuff moving forward with these?
We'll actually be adding sidewalks on the south. Right now, between Eighth Avenue and let's just say St. Otto's, there's really not much for sidewalks down there. We'd be extending sidewalks all the way up to the bridge on one side. I believe it's on the, on the west side is where we'd be adding it, but everything else would have the sidewalks on both sides of Fourth Street.
Not narrowing this street?
Nope. No, Fourth Street, we would be adding stop sign at Fifth Avenue on all four, so that would become a four-way stop at that location. We have had a number of accidents there, car crashes in the past, and so we're looking at, at doing that. I've spoken with the county engineer as well, previous one, I haven't talked to Tony yet in regards to that, but that was the understanding, that we'd be looking at a four-way stop at that location to try to minimize how much, you know, conflicts we have at that location. We'd be actually doing some, I don't want to call them bump outs, but no parking radiuses near that intersection to increase the visibility. I think that's also one of the, the issues, is that right at that intersection, it's tough to see around some of those corners, and so we'd be looking at doing some of that, those improvements as well, just to try to get traffic to stop and be able to see what's coming from the other direction.
I, I should have kept track over the years on, on how many accidents I've witnessed at that intersection.
I can pull up the data, but there's, there's enough.
Grace? Sorry, my mark. There are some green and hot pink spray paint marks on snowbanks and little pink ones coming up. Are those soil borings?
Those are where the soil borings were at, yep. One of the things that we wanted to find out is where the, the granite, or I shouldn't call it granite, where the bedrock is located along that stretch. When we did Third Street Southeast, we ran into a little bit as we got on Third Avenue as we were heading over to Fourth. It kind of came up, and then it dropped back down as we got closer to Fourth, so we weren't sure exactly how deep that was. Knowing that we've got a deep sewer in that stretch, because we're extending it all the way south and all the way north, we wanted to find out exactly where we're at. Obviously, it's going to be cheaper to, to bid that as opposed to get a, a change order, and so we wanted to, to get a pretty good idea on that. So we took one soil boring every block, and then around Third, where we knew we were going to see something, we had one every half a block, I think it was. And we did find, we'll probably run into it at, between Third and Second, we did find a little bump that comes up. And then once we got across Highway twenty-seven, between Second and Fifth Avenue, we did see quite a bit of bedrock there as well. So we'll be having to, to dig through that or blast through that in two thousand and twenty-three, but we'll also have to see some of it in two thousand and twenty-two.
So that's granite?
It's, it's like a shale. The top three feet is usually pretty weathered. When we did some stuff on Third Street Northeast, they were able to dig through it with a bucket as, as long as it has teeth in it. But once you get past that three feet, that, that weathered portion of it, it's pretty tough, and so they'll, they'll have to blast. I think it was Second Street back in probably the early two thousands when we did Second Street. They had to blast through that as well, and so we want to make sure that we kind of have an idea of what it is, so that we can communicate that to the contractors, so that they have a better idea, so that they can price it appropriately.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll move to adopt Resolution two thousand and twenty-two zero, uh, zero-six, to order the feasibility report.
I'll second.
Whoop, I was the one ahead of myself, sorry. Sorry, who seconded?
Me.
Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Starlee, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? Call or roll, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash zero-seven, accept feasibility report and call for public hearing, public improvement three ninety, Fourth Street Southeast, adopt.
Move to adopt.
Yeah, this is basically the, just accepting the feasibility report from the previous one.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Canofla, second by Councilmember Gushick. Any discussion? Call or roll, please.
Gushick?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash ten, appoint election administrators. Adopt, Lori.
Yes, each election year we are required to appoint election administrators. Typically, that would be the city clerk as our election administrator, and then we also appoint assistant election administrators, being myself, the finance officer, and the accounting technician.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash ten, appoint election administrators.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? Call or roll, please.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Carries.
City council reports and city authorities, boards, bureaus, commissions, and committees.
Excuse me, Council President, we did have one.
That's right.
Agenda item that was added, which was the, to act as the fiscal agent for the grant application for our town.
We would be, yeah, I needed to correct that. So Council President, the, the motion should be to allow for the city, or authorize the city to apply for the A B C D grant from the Five Wings Arts Council, not as a fiscal agent. The city would be receiving the funds.
And if they receive it, then they would be the fiscal agent?
The city would just, yeah, would be the administrator of the funds if received.
Okay.
What is the wish of the council?
I move to allow the city to apply for a grant for our town.
Second.